Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Business School Board Meeting this evening. We welcome all of our guests. We know that we have several talented students with us tonight who will be providing our musical performance. We're really excited to have you here. Welcome. Ms. Tanner, if you could please call the roll.
Basine?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
Gabriel?
Present.
Clanton?
Present.
Campson?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Wonderful. And now Ms. Faith Hanley will lead us into our opening remarks and presentation of colors.
Good evening. We request that all cell phones and pagers to be turned off or to vibrate during the course of this meeting. Thank you. It has become a tradition to honor our nation at each of our board meetings by presenting the colors. The colors tonight are being presented by the Granby High School NJROTC and the Maury High School Bel Canto under the direction of Mr. Garrison. Please rise and remain standing for the presentation of colors and the reciting of the National Anthem. We will now have our presentation of colors.
Mark! Mark! Colors! Hold! Order! Arms! Ready! Cut! Lift! Base! Present! Colors! Ready! Cut!
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, What so proudly we have, At the twilight's last gleaming, Whose broad stripes and bright stars, Through the perilous fight, For the ramparts we watched, Were so gallantly streaming, And the rocket's red glare, The one's bursting in air, Gave proof through the night, That our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave, For the land of the free, And the home of the brave?
Order! Colors! Ready! Cut! Right! Base! Port! Arms! Bow! Ear! Arch!
May be seated.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Patrick Garrison. I am the Director of Choirs at Maury High School, and we have a performance for you by our Bel Canto Advanced Women's Chorus. The piece is called "Lift Thy Eyes" by Mendelssohn. Thank you all.
Is that it? So, that's it? Mr. Garrison, if you wouldn't mind just telling us a little bit about your music program that you have at Maury High School?
Well, put your microphone on. All right. Again, I'm Patrick Garrison, and I direct five choirs at Maury High School. I have a guitar program there as well. We have two intro choirs that we get from multiple middle schools across the city. I believe this year, seven different middle schools make up our intro choirs, and from there, we, well, I audition them and move them up to an intermediate choir. And then I have my two advanced choirs. One is all treble, and the other one is a mixed choir. And tonight was a little bit of a combination of the two. I asked four of the guys from the mixed choir to join in with the advanced women's choir, and the girls that sang "Lift Thy Eyes" are all the advanced women's choir students that we have. And I've been there for four years now, and let me think, what else would be good to know? Fun facts, right? I should have thought about questions beforehand. I would say that there's a lot of success over there. The students are very proud of their work, and they work really hard. I would also say that they perform at least up to 20 or more performances a year. With the tattoo that we do every once in a while, that would add the number up a lot, closer to 30, 40. So, and I also have a great music coordinator who supports me and the choir, and always, you know, looks out for all the music staff, so I really appreciate all that she does, too. So, thank you.
And we thank you, and for what you do for our students each and every day. Thank you. What a wonderful performance. And now, onto item 5.05 Superintendent's Report.
Good evening, Dr. Gabriel, Mr. Clanton, members of the Board, and members of our community. Before sharing the superintendent's video report with you this evening, there are a couple of amazing accomplishments that our schools have achieved this year that I would like to share with you. Eight of our schools have received a Purple Star designation for demonstrating an outstanding commitment to meeting the needs of military-connected students and their families. This is the second year that the Virginia Department of Education and the Virginia Council on the Interstate Compact of Educational Opportunity have designated Purple Star Schools. This year, the Norfolk Public Schools that have achieved this honor include the Academy for Discovery at Lakewood, Bayview Elementary, Camp Allen Elementary, Grandy Elementary, Larchmont Elementary, Sewell's Point Elementary, Willard Elementary, and Willoughby Early Childhood Center. I would like to extend a warm congratulations to the teacher, staff, and administration of these schools for a job well done. Certainly, with our celebration and recognition of Veterans Day on this past Monday, acknowledgement of our schools for going above and beyond for military-connected students and their families is quite timely, and we thank our veterans for their service to our country. Also, I'm pleased to announce that Berkeley Campus Stella Early Childhood Center has been recognized once again as an Apple Distinguished School. This recognition is for a period of three years, from 2019 until 2022. The school is being recognized for its continuous success to accelerate academic achievement, creativity, higher-order thinking, coding, and for effectively integrating iPads into the curriculum. Apple Distinguished Schools are centers of innovation, leadership, and educational excellence that utilize Apple technology to inspire creativity, collaboration, and critical thinking. Congratulations are in order for the school's principal, Dr. Doritah White, the school's teachers and staff, and most importantly, for the children and the families of the Berkeley Campus Stella Early Childhood Center. Additionally, the school could not thrive without the diligent and consistent support of the Berkeley Campus Stella community at large. We thank you for your ongoing support. So, at this time, in keeping with our monthly tradition, we will share with you video footage of some of the exciting experiences related to teaching and learning that we've had in Norfolk Public Schools over the past few weeks. So, without further ado, Ms. Tanner?
Yes, Channel 47, please show what's been happening in Norfolk Public Schools.
Approximately 2,500 5th graders from around the district traveled to Naval Station Norfolk for the 3rd Annual STEM Day. Students were able to see a variety of Navy vehicles and even walk on the deck of an aircraft carrier. In addition, they participated in several hands-on STEM activities from a wide array of groups and organizations. Prior to the event, students learned about the geography of the city of Norfolk and the naval base, along with the effect sea level rise will have on both. Being able to see the naval station firsthand helped these 5th graders understand its importance to our community and think about possible careers for themselves in the future.
I think it's a great opportunity to highlight all the hard work that we do here at Naval Station Norfolk. As a commanding officer, it's a wonderful opportunity for me to open up the base to our local community. For those who've served around the world, there's certainly no better place to call home than Norfolk. And for the 5th graders in particular, we enjoy doing this because, again, we get to show how science, technology, engineering, and math will serve you in the Navy or in any career on the outside world.
Ultimately, I think there's two things that we really hope for. We hope that they are seeing the emphasis of STEM as an important function of the city of Norfolk and career opportunities for them, as well as having a sense of pride in their community and Norfolk Public Schools.
Juniors and seniors from all five of Norfolk's high schools attended Old Dominion University's first-ever Science Connection Day on a Saturday in late October. The event was designed to introduce students to the school's College of Sciences and included extensive tours of a wide variety of departments. The main objectives of the day were to get students excited about science while encouraging them to continue their studies after high school at Old Dominion University.
They wanted to instill the passion of science and research, and I want them to really think of themselves being part of these teams and these labs that they're seeing, and I want them to envision, you know, their careers, what they could look like by just being present and getting involved and, you know, getting their hands dirty and doing some research.
I really liked walking around the physics labs and seeing all that stuff and them explaining everything. I might want a minor in chemistry when I'm in college. I don't know yet fully, though, but it's pretty interesting so far.
I thought the chemistry stuff was pretty cool when they put the different metals on the X-ray spectrometer. I haven't put a lot of thought into colleges, and I know I should, but it's definitely on the list of, like, possible colleges.
We want to ensure that our students are engaged in science, and they see the opportunities that are out there. These are high school seniors who, they could stay right here in our local area to go to college. They don't have to go three and four hours away. They can get a quality science education, higher ed education, right here in Norfolk at Old Dominion University.
All year long, students at Southside STEM Academy at Campus Stella have been learning about trees and what they mean for the environment. Recently, some students put their green thumbs to good use as they beautified the school grounds by planting trees.
Well, it's a great opportunity for the children here at the school to learn the importance of trees to the ecosystem and the benefits that trees provide the city. The city, we also were able to send the children on a couple of field trips out to the Norfolk Botanical Gardens and to the City Nursery, so they could see really how trees are grown, the importance of trees, the importance of pollinators, bees and butterflies and birds and insects to the ecosystem as a whole, the importance of trees as a food source, and this supports their learning system here as a STEM school, the importance of science. And so, we really see this as kind of a holistic program for the kids here.
It was fun, interesting, and I have learned lots of things. I have learned that if moach touches the stem of the tree, it could kill the tree, and the moach has to be two to three inches deep.
He showed us how to dig it up, how to plant a tree, somebody hold the tree, and then we spread the soil around. And then we put the root out so it won't drop around the tree, so it won't cut off the tree. And then when we dig the soil and we push it down so it can go under, but we can't put the soil on top of the root.
With the help of volunteers from Bank of America and the city of Norfolk, students helped plant 81 native trees. This project has given these students a new perspective.
I look at trees differently. I realize that trees are more important now because it takes effort for them to grow, and as you're taking care of them, they repay you with fruit.
I'm interested because I like doing shovel work and planting work. I like planting trees, so it would be interesting to me because I'll probably do this when I get older.
Two former superintendents from the recruitment firm of McPherson and Jacobson invited students from all five high schools to participate in a question-and-answer session focused on the hiring of the school system's new superintendent. Four questions were asked during the hour-long forum, and students were eager to give their opinions on everything from the good and bad features of the district to what qualities they felt the new superintendent should possess.
By opening, it's like I actually get to participate in the choosing of the superintendent, voice my opinions of what I believe should be good qualities and characteristics of a new superintendent. And I think that everyone should be able to participate in this so they can voice their opinions, because I know I can't speak for everybody in my school, but I can speak for a small group.
I feel like it's a great opportunity, you know? They pick kids from all schools, not just one, and be able to sit down and hear other schools and what their problems are, and say, like, we're not the only school that has a problem, and we can express it, and they take it in, and like, take it to the person who got to make the choice, yeah.
What is most impressive to me is the passion that all of the groups have, that they want to see an outstanding superintendent lead this district, and everyone pretty much has the same goal. They want Norfolk to be an outstanding school district that's well-respected throughout, not only the area, but the entire state and country.
170 students from six middle schools came together at Booker T. Washington High School to show off their athletic prowess at the 5th Annual Big Feet Meet.
The Big Feet Meet is a really important event for our children with special needs to come out and experience different activities and challenge themselves and enjoy this beautiful weather. It's really fun to get out here and show the kids that we're all supporting them and meet them and give high fives, and it's a really good feeling being out here.
Under sunny skies, students with special needs enjoyed 11 stations that included a softball toss, cornhole, and a 50-yard dash. Volunteers from Norfolk State, Old Dominion, and the Police Department, along with other students, help provide an atmosphere of inclusion and unity.
Opportunities that Norfolk provides for special needs children are more than the other school systems around. They have cores, after-school programs, and they provide transportation, so it's really a blessing for the working parents to be able to leave their kids and have activities for the special needs children to have.
It truly is a great opportunity for these students. Just the ability to come out and just start competing against themselves, doing their best that they can, performing at a level that they may not have thought about is just really important for the students. It gives them the strength, the courage to try new things, the willingness to do it, and knowing that there's people here in our community that want to help them even supports this philosophy even more, because that will get them to the next levels that they need. And parents probably love it because it brings the community together and showing that we are a community as a whole, interested in every student in Norfolk Public Schools.
Award-winning children's book author Derek Barnes visited Lindenwood Elementary and read his most recent book release, The King of Kindergarten, to students in pre-K through 2nd grade. Clever Communities in Action invited the author to the school, not just to promote a love of reading, but also to instill confidence in these enthusiastic youngsters by introducing them to an author they can relate to.
The children are so excited. So, there is a lot of energy here at Lindenwood Elementary. They, before Derek even came, they made crowns in art class, so they have their little crowns on their heads with their own little decorations, and they are super excited. And so, it allows them to see up close and personal people who are creating this art, and for them to see, hey, I can do this if I want to.
I didn't meet my first black male author until I was 24. So, I think it's important that children see, you know, what they aspire to become. You know, someone in this audience may be the next children's book author, maybe bestselling children's book author, but the fact that they can see it and it's tangible makes it possible for them. So, I think it's extremely important.
Just a few days later, free eye examinations were made available to every Lindenwood Elementary student. During this special Saturday event, students were given a pre-screening and, if needed, a full eye exam by a volunteer optometrist. Representatives from Homer Optical and Essilor of America then helped students who needed glasses choose a pair, which will be delivered to the school in a few weeks, free of charge. Their goal is to provide these students with a basic but invaluable tool: clear eyesight.
If you have a child who doesn't see well, they don't know that they can't see well. They don't know the difference. And so, we have to give them something to compare to because kids who don't see very well, they get put in the wrong class, they get, they can be marginalized in a lot of ways, and all they're struggling to do is to see. This is as good as it gets. This is why we go to work every day. Now, usually, we're selling eyewear, and we're proud to do it, but this is a whole different level.
This is really awesome, and beneficial to everybody involved. I mean, I never would have thought that a school could provide so much for their students. Everybody was friendly. They were telling jokes, laughing, making sure the kids are smiling, making sure everybody was comfortable and easy, so it was pretty cool.
The Colgate Dental Mobile made a stop for students at St. Helena Elementary as a part of their Bright Smiles, Bright Futures program. During the special visit, which was sponsored by the National Council of Negro Women in Norfolk, these youngsters got a dental screening and learned everything they needed to know about proper dental health.
We are talking to the children about how to prevent cavities, which 60 to 90% of children worldwide experience cavities. So, we're talking about, we're trying to increase their awareness of what to do to prevent cavities, like brushing twice a day with a fluoride toothpaste, flossing at night, choosing snacks that don't stick and are sweet, okay, and limiting snacking twice a day, and also going to the dentist and the hygienist twice a year. It's very important. It has a lot to do with their overall health, their image of themselves, and how far they get in the future.
On October 23rd, Norfolk Public Schools banded together for Unity Day, a day of kindness, acceptance, and inclusion. Schools across the district organized events that highlighted ways to help students recognize how to overcome bullying and be more accepting of others. Orange was the color of the day, as students and staff were encouraged to dress in the color to bring the importance of being kind and accepting into the spotlight. Middle school sports has completed its fall season, and champions have been crowned. The Academy of Discovery at Lakewood won the girls' volleyball championship by defeating Blair. The Lakewood boys made it a sweep as they won the volleyball title with a win over Norview. Power was on display as three home runs helped propel Blair over Lakewood in softball. And the Ruffner Bulldogs made it back-to-back championships on the gridiron as they defeated Lake Taylor. Check out the NPS Athletics page and click on Sports Highlights to watch some of the action. Booker T. Washington's junior running back Rodney Hammond, one of the most sought-after players in the class of 2021, made a verbal commitment before the Booker's upcoming game.
I chose the University of Pittsburgh because, like, everything about him I love, and then, like, I'm going off, like, what'd have me successful, to go to the next level. I'm not just trying to play football. I want to go to, like, to the NFL, and I want to get my family out of here. That's the number-one goal, always.
A lot of people wait till their senior years to declare. What made you, as a junior, to make this decision now?
I feel like, like, I'm a grown man. I can make a grown man a decision. So, like, the schools that offer me, if you really want me, you still, like, you still offer me, because anything can happen. But I'm going off with the love, like, where the love coming from right now. Wherever my heart going to, that's where I'm going. So, that's why I chose Pittsburgh.
For more news stories and other information about Norfolk Public Schools, watch NPS Now on WNPSTV 47 or the NPS website.
I want to thank Channel 47 for putting that video together. They do such a magnificent job every month, and I want to thank them for that. And for those of you who want more information about some of the footage, please stay tuned. This is Channel 47. That concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Birdsong. Next item on the agenda, 5.06 School Board Clerk Report. Ms. Tanner?
Yes. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Gabriel, Acting Superintendent, Dr. Birdsong, Board Members and Attendees for tonight's board meeting. I would like to begin with a special acknowledgement from the United Way for Norfolk Public Schools' participation and their annual campaign. Duncan Alonso, who's the Senior Account Manager and Young Philanthropist for United Way, and Jim Bibbs, who is the Chief Human Resources Officer for the Port of Virginia and the United Way's Norfolk City Chair, are here to give a special recognition to Norfolk Public Schools. So, please come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jim Bibbs, and I am a United Way volunteer. I'm happy, I'm here happy to say thank you on behalf of a grateful community. We count on you to educate our children, our next generation of community leaders, and as we see, you go far beyond for the students here. Buying school supplies, giving students rides, offering hugs and words of wisdom. But you do so much more for the community than just that. Last year, the teachers alone contributed $67,588, and your students also gave $13,208. You are shaping tomorrow's good citizens and changing lives today. Whether through good funding of weekend backpacks for students, for feed students in need, a night of shelter for a homeless veteran, a student-needs fund that addresses the small but frequent barriers to success of our kids, or a hot meal delivered to a senior at home. Lives are being changed by the generosity of your faculty, staff, and your students. And on behalf of the individuals and the families that you've assisted and the United Way, we'd like to say thank you. I'd like to present this plaque, giving the total fund of $80,796 given by the Norfolk School District.
Thank you so much. And we are in the midst of, we just finished our campaign here in the district, and so we're excited to see, you know, what the totals are going to be for this year from our staff and our students. That's it for our recognitions for December, November.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tanner, and thank you very much for coming this evening and spending some time with us and presenting us with this. We are very proud of our students and our staff. We know they go the extra mile each and every day. Next item on our agenda are citizen comments on Agenda Items Only. I'm going to make a clarification here. We are also accepting comments on our superintendent search, as this was an item that was brought up in discussion during our superintendent search during the presentations. And so, if there are members in the community that would like to speak on the superintendent search, as well as on Agenda- search, as well as on Agenda Items, they are able to do so. Ms. Tanner?
Our only speaker that we have signed up for this evening is Barrett Hicks.
Good evening, Dr. Birdsong, Dr. Gabriel.
Good evening.
Board members. I come tonight just to speak briefly on some personnel issues for you guys, but I want to first thank Dr. Birdsong for your leadership. I appreciate what you're doing. It looks like you're trying to hold people accountable, and we, we see that and notice that. I also want to thank Dr. Cataldo as well for his great leadership as well out in the communities and whatnot. And I thank the board for allowing us to view Southside STEM, as well as was able to go into Chesterfield as well, just to see what's going on and what's happening within the district. I, I question some of the personnel issues based on your, you guys had a meeting today, and I saw you guys speaking to the fact you have a surplus in funding for positions that have not been filled. And Ms. Smith brought up a great, great point during this, this time, in reference to the positions not being filled, but now you guys are saying that you're going to give these folks pay increase and whatnot. And yes, I champion the pay increase, but I think as Ms. Smith was trying to say, are we going to eliminate those positions? You, you addressed that these, these positions have been around for a long time, and so this surplus has been built up. It's going to become a problem if you don't do one or two. I mean, get rid of the position and/or try to find funding to actually give that pay increase. But just to say that you're going to give a pay increase because you have a surplus, the question has to be, why do we have so many vacancies that are not being filled? And I, and I do question that as far as the leadership, that, that the one issue I really question leadership on, in the sense of your HR team and your recruiting efforts, how can we have all these vacancies for such a long, a long period of time? We've got to get out there and do a better job. And that's not just with the folks in, in the lunchrooms and whatnot. I, I think that's a problem even with the, the teacher fields as well. They've got to get out of their offices. Can't be sent back in the office. And I, and I speak to this because I am a career recruiter. It's time to get out and go to work. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hicks. Next item on our agenda, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
There is a motion to approve, and there is a second. Is there any further discussion on the consent agenda? Ms. Bassin?
Yes, I would like to remove item 6.08 from the consent agenda.
Sorry. Let me pull it.
It looks like it was just added this evening.
I think that was added in the wrong place, because we think it should be seven.
Yeah, it's, it should be item 7.
7.08.
08.
Oh, okay. Yep. Okay. Do you want to just note that?
So I'll accept a friendly amendment to accept the consent agenda with the exception of item 7.08, which should now be item 7.08, and VSB delegate. Okay? 7.08, if I can just for clarity, 7.08 will now become DSBA delegate, and 7.09 will now be matters of the board. Okay?
Any other items? Ms. Tanner, if you could please call the roll.
Bassin?
Aye.
Hampson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, 7.01 Monthly Financial Reports.
Dr. Gabriel, members of the board, again, good evening. I will ask that this time, Ray Reyes, to come forward. He will be sharing with you information about the October financial reports and month-end reports as well.
Dr. Gabriel, members of the school board, acting superintendent and members of the community, I will present the financial highlights for the month of October 2019. Revenue received as of October 31st, 2019 was $104.9 million, or 31.2% of the total budget. This compares with 27.7% as of the same time period in fiscal year 2019, and 27.6% as of fiscal year 2018. As of October 31st, 2019, expenditures and encumbrances totaled $90.3 million, or 26.9% of our budget. This compares with 25.5% for the same time period in fiscal year 2019, and 23.5% for fiscal year 2018. A summary of budget transfers, $50,000 or greater for the period is attached in your package. You also have schedules that present the same information in a different format. And that basically concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Seeing as there are none, Ms. Tanner, if I could have a motion on the floor to accept the financial reports as presented.
I move to accept the financial report as presented.
Second. Okay. Any further discussion? Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Bassin?
Aye.
Hampson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye. 7.02 Adoption of the VSBA Legislative Agenda and Proposed Amendments.
Madam Chair, I move that we, that we adopt the VSBA Legislative Agenda Proposed Amendments.
Second.
Moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Bassin?
Aye.
Hampson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye. 7.02 Adoption of the VSBA Legislative Agenda and Proposed Amendments.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the Legislative Agenda with the noted updates and amendments that we made in discussion in preparation for our November 26 Bring Your Legislative Meeting.
A second. Okay. Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Bassin?
There were, there were a couple of items, including, for, for example, the equity fund information that Adana Strategies said that they would get to us. I personally and respectfully would like to obtain that information before, and seeing what kind of language that they might recommend before adopting the agenda.
Madam Chair, if I can, and, and no disrespect to Ms. Bassin, but I'm just trying to look at the timetable of what we have. We're supposed to present a legislative agenda, so maybe we just take that item out until we see what they have and we approve the other items. But I really think that we need to approve something that the board collectively has said that we've approved before we present it to our legislators.
Mr. Jordan, and then I have a thought on that as well.
Yeah, I, I didn't realize, I thought after the, the work session that we would, I didn't know we were going to vote on it since we didn't get a chance to have the feedback. I thought that Adana said they would make some edits and, and then bring it back to us. I do understand Mr. Clanton's point. I'm not sure where, where we are in the middle. I, I would like to be able to say if there's some way for us to be supportive of the committee's work, because I do think we need to have something for our, for our meeting, but, but I do think we should also have the benefit of voting on the, the changes.
I agree with that, and I think that this document is, we can, we can adopt what we have seen, knowing that they are going to be coming back to us with the recommendations. And after we receive additional feedback from our legislators, that will also provide opportunity for us to make sure that our legislative priorities are succinct, and we, well, we could have the opportunity to amend them if necessary, based on the feedback that we receive.
Madam Chair, and I don't know, maybe my colleagues, if, what if we just said adopt it as the draft for presentation for the meeting? Give us time to be able to, to receive the edits, and then at our December 4th meeting, move forward with the final, so that at least we have something to present and have a discussion around, but we present it as the draft. Is that okay?
Comfortable with it.
Okay, so I'll amend my motion to adopt the draft version of the NPS Legislative Agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask for a clarification? So if in the next week, they were to provide us back with some edits, as we discussed earlier today, and could that draft be then what we might use with the legislators on the 26th?
So I don't think that there's any objection. I think we're all, we're pretty much in agreement. So if there is no objection, I would say that if we receive an updated version, that that would replace and become the, the new draft. But we present it as a draft, and then we do a final vote on December 4th.
Okay.
Is everyone good with that?
December 4th or the 18th?
Well, the 18th, yeah.
Because I don't recall hearing any, I think we were all in agreement on the changes, so I don't foresee any reason why we wouldn't accept this in the end. We were all in favor of the recommendations, so with going ahead and voting for it, so that we can be a unified front for our legislators.
So.
Okay.
I would, Madam Chair, why don't we ask the, if we're asking Adana to come back with comments in time for us to present it at our breakfast or our, our meeting, why don't we follow up and tell them we want it by, you know, a week from today, or whenever it is, and so that we can, so that we can do that, not leave it to chance, but tell them we need the changes back in a week? What is that, the?
22nd. I don't, I don't mind asking. I don't, I don't mind with them making that request. I mean, I'm not understanding the timeline because it still wouldn't, we couldn't vote on it before the 26th.
No, I, I thought Mr. Clanton was admitting the motion to say that we would present at the breakfast to the legislators a draft.
Yes.
So I'm saying if we are doing the draft, that the draft can include the updates that we, that we discussed.
It would, but it'd still be draft form because we haven't, we wouldn't have the, because the timeline doesn't fit for us to vote on it and finalize it before the 26th. So either way, we, we vote on proposing the draft with, or vote on accepting this with the amendments that will be made, either way, we're going to be accepting a draft form for that event.
And then we vote on it in December for the final. I think we're all saying the same thing.
I think so too.
Mr. Jordan's just putting a timeline to say that we get it back by the 22nd.
So we all have it.
We have the edits prior to the legislative Bring Your Legislature to School Day. Okay. Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Bassin?
Aye.
Hampson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye. Wonderful. Next item, 7.04 Student Scholarship Matter. May I have a motion on the floor to accept the student scholarship matter that has been in discussion?
Madam Chair, I don't have a motion, but I have a recommendation for you to consider. At this point, I'm asking that we move it later in the agenda, so that we can move the, the items that are in executive comment into the public content section, and then have our discussion and vote on it. Because right now, I think the items are still in the executive content section, and we need to move them to the, to the public content section.
Okay.
On board docs.
Oh, okay. All right, so hold on a second. So then let's, okay, so Ms. Tanner, if you could make the items under the student scholarship matter out of executive into public, that would be wonderful. And then let's just move on to item 7.05, and then we will come back to the student scholarship matter.
Okay.
Okay? Okay, it's just making it public, that's all. Okay. Okay, Ms. Hampson?
As everyone knows, we are in the middle of a search for a new superintendent. We have the initial search, you have 180 days. We have two weeks of winter break coming up as we near the end of the search, and so I'm making a proposal now to address that. Pursuant to Section 22.1-60 of the Code of Virginia from 1950, as amended to request an extension from the Commonwealth Superintendent of Public Instruction of 180 days within which to appoint a new superintendent. Pursuant to Section 22, I'm saying the same thing again, sorry. I move that the school board of the City of Norfolk, Virginia, approve sending the attached written report to the Superintendent of Public Instruction requesting an additional 180 days within which to fill its superintendent's position.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as there are none, Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Bassin?
Nay.
Hampson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
No.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Nay.
Gabriel?
Aye. The motion carries. Okay, let's go back to the student scholarship matter.
Public.
Is it public now? Hold on one second.
If not, Madam Chair, 7.06, while the clerk's still pulling that up, I'd like to move to refer policy, BDB Special Board Meetings and KD-DTH Public Participation and School Board Meetings and Public Hearings. I'd like to refer that to the Policy Committee for, for additional review and to report back for our December 18th, 2019 Board Meeting.
Okay. You?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Bassin?
Aye.
Hampson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye. Thank you. Is item 7.04 public now? Okay, great. All right. Is there a resolution on the floor for the approval of the student scholarship matter?
Madam Chair, a resolution approving the creation of the City of Norfolk School Board Recognition Scholarship Program and re-appropriating funds to support it. Whereas the school board of the City of Norfolk, Virginia has determined to create the Norfolk School Board Recognition Scholarship, and whereas that scholarship will be funded entirely by the funds available to the school board, and whereas the scholarship will only be available from 2019 to 2023, each year to be funded separately in future budgets now there, now, therefore, be it resolved by the school board of the City of Norfolk, Section 1, that the board hereby approves the City of Norfolk School Board Recognition Scholarship, subject to the conditions set out in Attachment A to this resolution, attached and incorporated by reference. Section 2, that the board hereby amends its fiscal year 2020 budget by re-appropriating funds in the amount of $10,000 from account number D21-62110-000-55100, so as to pay for any scholarship awarded for this fiscal year. Section 3, that the resolution shall be in effect from here and after the date of this adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Clanton. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Hampson provided the second. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, ma'am, I have a question.
Yes.
Just to...
It's been, uh, moved and seconded, um, Ms. Camson provided the second. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, ma'am, I have a question.
Yes.
Just a quick one. On the recognition scholarship award recipient acknowledgement, on the scholarship guideline enrollment form, second page, third box, please return this form no later than December 16th. I would just like to know when this is being sent out, or if students already have this.
So, um, Ms. Hanley, thank you very much for, um, bringing that question up. This is a matter that was, um, held, um, with great sensitivity, um, because what has occurred here is five high school seniors were named a Granville P. Mead Scholarship winner at a School Board Recognition Ceremony on May 8th, 2019. The award certificate that was printed, was printed incorrectly. And it should have stated nominee for the scholarship. The School Board, we acknowledged the error that was made by the previous administration, and we made the decision to honor the spirit of the award and grant these students the same monetary award one would receive if they had won the Granville P. Mead Scholarship. So these students, as soon as we take action on this item, these students and their families will receive immediate correspondence, because they have planned to receive these funds. And the right thing to do is to provide the funds, even though a mistake was made. And so, they have, we've been in contact with them. And we realize that, um, it is November, but we had to do our due diligence to, uh, review the matter, take appropriate action, and then come together on an appropriate solution. Any further discussion? Ms. Smith?
Yes, I would just like to say that I have mixed emotions about this one. While the certificates we provided, or the Norfolk Public Schools provided, uh, created some confusion, the application process was very clear in terms of who would, who would determine who the rece- award recipients were, and who would present those awards to them. And it clearly, clearly stated that it would not be Norfolk Public Schools. Uh, so for that reason, it's difficult for me to agree with us providing the funds for this, um, incident.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Madam Chair.
So, Mr. Jordan, then Mr. Clanton.
Yeah, I just was gonna say, I think that the, um, I appreciate the, the Board and the Administration uh, working to take steps, uh, in this regard to, uh, look out for children. I just think it's important that we acknowledge that, uh, the errors is ours collectively. Uh, Board, Administration, together. And, um, and that's just like what I like to say on the matter at this point. Thank you.
Mr. Clanton?
Uh, Madam Chair, I, I respect the, the comments that have been made by my colleagues in regards to this. I always believe in doing what's right by our students. We have five students who've graduated from Norfolk Public Schools, who are now enrolled in college. Um, and unfortunately, at a School Board Recognition Program, were called down with great anticipation, received an award, shook each one of our hands with anticipation of students who were, um, were, were received, but essentially, um, had a financial challenge to going to college. Um, as a first-generation student who went to college and graduated, um, I felt that we had a due diligence regardless of whether the mistake happened. Um, that we, as the Board, took ownership of this and did our due diligence to find the necessary funds, to ensure that we have five students who graduated from Norfolk Public Schools, and with anticipation in four years that they will graduate from college with a degree, and can look back and see not only how we helped them in their career in college, but that we also helped them to get to, get through college with their financial support. So, um, I heartily support this. Um, I think it's the best thing that, that we can do, regardless in what era, that it's doing the best thing by our students. And it's really showing, uh, to the community that we care about our kids, whether or not they've still here in our doors, or that they're representing us in college. So, I'm voting in support of this.
I'd like to, Ms. Martin?
Just to add to that, um, you know, and, and again, um, I'm a first-year college graduate in my family, and, um, and I just, this is an area where we are stewards of public money, and we have to, um, be very responsible in our decision-making around that. And, um, for that reason, this is, um, coming out of the School Board Budget. This is not coming out of, out of our schools' budget. But again, this is something that happened by adults. Adults caused this problem. I, we don't have a lot of information on what the process was. In fact, we weren't given any information on who these award winners were, how they were selected, and so forth. So, um, we were, we're put in a position that we are very uncomfortable being in. But, you know, in the, at the end of the day, this affects children and their education, and their ability to go to school. So we're just feel that that's our priority, and that we need to do, uh, and I'm speaking, I guess I shouldn't say we, um, I'll speak on my, you know, on behalf of myself and some of my other, my colleagues, that this is ju- this is just the right thing to do. And so we are taking it out of our funds to make this right by them.
And I would echo Ms. Martin's statements, that this was an issue that was, um, probably an honest mistake caused by adults. But we have to take responsibility for it, as the Board, sitting here before you today. And these students and their families were counting on these funds. And while, yes, there may have been a very detailed application process, what the students remember, and what they have to recall, was that they were brought down, they shook our hands, photos were taken, certificates were given, and they thought that they had won the scholarship. So, we are trying to make right an issue that unfortunately occurred, but this is the best option that we can come with. And we certainly don't want the funds to affect anything close to the classroom. And that is why we elected to take the funds out of the School Board's budget.
Ms. Tanner, if you could please call the roll.
Basine?
Aye.
Camson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
No.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Nay.
Gabriel?
Aye. The motion carries. Okay. Give me just a second here. Yep, yep. Next item that we have on our agenda are citizen comments on non-agenda items. Ms. Tanner, if you could please, oh, you know what?
Yes, our first speaker for tonight is Ellen Fittson-Rider, followed by Jill Kane.
And I'm sorry, I don't, my computer is not working right now. But Ms. Fittson-Rider, please come forward. I'm just going to remind everybody that you have three minutes to speak. Um, please state your name, whether or not you have a student enrolled in Norfolk Public Schools, whether you're employed in Norfolk Public Schools. And, um, be mindful that, um, once you reach the three-minute mark, um, I will let you know that your time has elapsed. And if you could quickly end your comments. And submit any items that you have to our clerk. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Board, Dr. Birdsong. Um, I, one copy has, Ms. Tanner, she can make copies for you guys. So, um, I would like to start today with a quote. Oh, my name is Ellen Fittson-Rider, I'm the mother of a middle-schooler, eighth grader. She attends, um, Northside Middle School. I'd like to begin today with a quote, "If you always do what you've always done, you'll always get what you've always got." So I'd like to talk today about the innocently enough-sounding Applied Studies Diploma and the major impact it can have on a student's educational tract and the rest of their life. I believe a few months ago that you all received the Critical Position Points Training Manual that was developed by the Virginia Board of People with Disabilities and the VDOE Department of Special Education and Student Services. It accompanies a wonderful training that is beneficial not only for families, but for educational administrators and teachers as well. In it, it defines, on pages 18 and 19, an applied to Studies Diploma as only being available to children identified as having a disability who complete the requirements of their IUP, but do not meet the requirements for either a standard diploma or advanced studies diploma. It does not specifically say that the Applied Studies Diploma is not recognized as a diploma by the federal government, nor outside the state of Virginia, or by most colleges, or many employment opportunities, including the military. But this is indeed the case. Children earning an Applied Studies Diploma are not considered as graduation, graduated in federal statistics, which contributes to Norfolk Public Schools as having half the special education graduation rate compared to the national average. As you know, I have personally, personal experience with my child being misidentified as intellectually disabled and placed in an inappropriate self-contained special education program, and placed on the Applied Studies Diploma track. This was presented to me as a benefit. In effect, a positive remediation program where my child could get more individualized attention to help her teachers better meet her educational needs. And I was told that she can always get back on the SOL track when she is doing better. This not only is very not, very much not the purpose of self-contained special education programs and the Applied Studies Diploma track, i.e. as remediation repositories for kids who need appropriate support in the general education setting, but aren't getting it. But nothing could be further from the truth. Once a child has been off the SOL track, and the longer the child has been off that track, the less likely it is for them to ever be able to get back on and potentially earn a standard or advanced studies diploma, ever. Fortunately, my daughter's education was not diverted for long. I was aware of what was happening and saw that IUP solely for the intent of getting at her out of what had become a toxic situation. But others are not so lucky. There are families who I have come across personally, as well as some that I have become aware of through my work on CAC, where their children were reaching the age of graduation only to find out that their child would not be earning a recognized diploma as they explore, explored their future steps, and feel misinformed, tricked even. Wow. There's a page and a half more, guys, so I won't use up another three minutes. But, um, please read it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Fittson-Rider. Okay. Next.
Okay. Jill Kane, followed by Ha- uh, Nate Kennison, excuse me.
Good evening. My name is Jill Kane. I'm employed part-time by Norfolk Public Schools as the Director of the All-City Jazz Ensemble. I've been with the band since 2005, first as a volunteer, then as a paid instructor, off and on as the budget has allowed. But even when I was, have been on the payroll, I've always, for over 14 years, completed work for the Jazz Ensemble that far exceeded the number of hours I was compensated for. The last paycheck I received from Norfolk Public Schools totaled $46.17. This past June, my co-director, who helped found the band in the mid-'90s, retired after more than two decades with the group. This bittersweet milestone meant that for the first time in many years, a teaching position would be opening in this band, considered to be one of the top high school jazz ensembles in the area. Nate Kennison was, and still is, by far, the best candidate for the position. The students of the Jazz Ensemble want to know why Mr. Kennison hasn't been back. They are intelligent young adults who are aware there's been a conflict. If keeping Mr. Kennison away from the band is your priority, then please, those of you who are opposed to him should be the ones to explain your reasoning to them. They've been hesitant to believe me, the person who somehow became the messenger, when I tell them it's a personal conflict, and that I can't make sense of it either. They read the newspaper, they know what's been written. Your efforts to derail Mr. Kennison's attempt to fill a part-time vacancy he's highly qualified for are as disgraceful as the energy you've placed into keeping his application status at the forefront of your School Board priorities. My students and I are angry. Your personal issues against Mr. Kennison have wasted enormous amounts of my time, and left me drained, defeated, and unable to provide the expected level of instruction and energy by myself. For over 20 years, this band has existed and provided exceptional performance and educational opportunities, as well as potential career paths and skills needed to participate in college-level ensembles. These children just wanted Nate Kennison to be their teacher. Of all things for anyone, especially teenagers, to be angry about, this is all they wanted. It's all we wanted. We're the ones who have lost.
Nate Kennison, followed by Alton Robinson.
My name is Nate Kennison, I have four kids in Norfolk Public Schools. When the Director of the Jazz Ensemble retired last year, my colleague Jill reached out to me to ask if I would apply for the position. Tanya Basine and Rodney Jordan, I truly underestimated how low you would go to target a colleague, a private citizen, and administrators in Norfolk Public Schools. Fact, in your claims of transparency, nepotism, and illegal hiring process, you chose to leave out several of the most important transparent details. Fact one, the part-time position for the All-City Jazz Band was posted publicly, and I applied through all the normal public channels. Fact, I have never been paid for my service, nor have I ever solicited payment for my service. Fact, I received a verifiable phone call on August 28th from the Director of Human Resources, stating that, A, I was not cleared for work, I was not officially hired, and that I would not be hired until proper certifications were met. I was a community volunteer. That phone call marks a definitive moment, making your entire narrative about illegal hiring and nepotism an outright lie to the public. You used your position as elected officials to gather privileged FOIA documents, including my unredacted application and my personal information. You actively pursued this information using your School Board public email account to create a misleading story and use the newspaper as a weapon. I was on the front page two times within one month, because of information that you shared. To my knowledge, an elected official using the newspaper to smear citizens isn't technically illegal, but it's highly unethical. And it stands in breach of your oath of office, where it says that you will impartially discharge your duties. The most important transparent port in this story is your very non-impartial relationships to the people that you've targeted. Mr. Jordan, you were voted out of the School Board chairmanship and replaced by Dr. Gabriel. And Mrs. Basine, according to your campaign finance records, you spent over $10,000 of your own money in a campaign directly against me. Only a year ago. Do you sincerely expect the citizens of Norfolk to believe that this is about transparency when it's so very clearly about retribution and revenge? Your actions were not related to special education, recess, accountability, literacy, building maintenance, safety and security of schools. They were specifically served to do harm. You've had your opportunity to spread a fake story in the newspaper. And tonight was my opportunity to tell the public the real story of revenge. After tonight, I am going to move on from this. I am washing my hands of my service. I don't want to see my name in the paper again, because you decided to make something up. I don't want to be at the center of your attention and the forefront of your School Board priorities. I simply and sincerely encourage you to move past your own vendettas and aggressions, and return to work and service to Norfolk Public Schools.
Alton Robinson, followed by Barrett Hicks.
Good evening, uh, School Board Chair, Ms. Gabriel and Board members. I'm here because my daughter was suspended from Gint Elementary School. And I'm gonna read what the suspension says. "Student swung another student around in the gym, causing him to bump into another student." So vague, didn't even bother me. She got a one-day suspension. But, she's a black child, and she was involved with another young man that was a black child. And then the black child, the male, got in an altercation with another child, which was a white male. The two black children got suspended, but the white children did not. So, I went and had a conference with the, um, Assistant Principal. And I'm a bit frustrated, ma'am, but please, uh, don't misunderstand my tone here. I just want to get to the, uh, bottom of this. And I went there to find out, how do you suspend two black children and don't suspend the white child? And the black child and the white child is, uh, involved in altercation. I asked to see a referral during the conference. The Assistant Principal told me, "We do not give referrals to parents." But I say, "Ma'am, can I read it?" She would not even allow me to read the referral that was written on my child that caused my child to be suspended. So when I reinstated my child the very next day, because of one-day suspension, there was a referral on the desk of the principal. And I will read that. It, it doesn't even match what the suspension says. However, I was told by the Assistant Principal that the teacher that wrote the referral also wrote this. Listen to what the referral says. "A female student reported to me that a male student hit another male student in the face several times. The male student that was hit stated Christina, my daughter, kept shoving the male student into him, and that she would not stop after being asked." I Facebook-lived that conference, because I've spoken to many of my friends that have children attending Gint Elementary School, and they have spoken about racism there. I never encountered it. So, I had no- I never encountered it, so I had no reason to even come down here and speak about it. They wanted my support, I would. However, when it came home and I spoke with this principal, and she denied me the paperwork that was given to me, I called Mr. Pfeiffer, and it took me a month almost, and I got a call from him yesterday, and he was trying to pull some words out of it. Hey, I don't know what he was doing, but I could not take his conversation. And my daughter got suspended, and now I'm trying to find out what is going to happen to that Assistant Principal that affected my child. I know you guys said tonight that you are concerned about what affects children. I have a twelve-year-old child who studies history, the racism that occurred in America, and she twelve-year-old, and now she is experiencing the same history that she is studying. That is not history if she goes to a school and a school administrator make it a reality. And I just want to know what's going to happen, because I'm not going to stop. If my child was kicked out the school, that Assistant Principal needed to be kicked out the school too for her actions, the perception of racism.
Thank you very much. Mr. Barrett Hicks.
I'm sorry to hear that about your child. Now, I say to you guys, you spoke to about adults making it right. Adults need to start making it right. I want to, again, I want to commend, uh, Dr. White over at the Early Childhood Center, Berkeley Early Childhood Center, for the great work that they're doing. And those children, awesome, awesome. And I thank you, Dr. Birdsong, for speaking to that this evening. I question, though, if Southside STEM is ready for those children once they leave, and I ask this body to ensure that they are. I have to question that. I have to question, because we've been questioning a long time. Is there truly a STEM-focused program at Southside STEM? I mean, we went in and did a walkthrough, and we met some remarkable students and whatnot, but we really need to know as a community whether those children at Southside STEM will be prepared when they leave there for high school. And I talk about college, will they be prepared for high school? And I ask this body, the school administration, to ensure that that does happen. Early in the year as well, we did a walkthrough, as I spoke earlier, at Chesterfield, and I asked a question there as well. Will these children be prepared for kindergarten? There are some questions as well. I've heard different rules are being applied across the district as far as these children. It bothers me the fact that in some of the programs, the children are not being led or shared how to write their names or spell and know the letters within their names. Hopefully, we're not talking about going back to making an X. I ask again for this bodies to look into these things and make sure they are not happening. Early in the year as well, went over to St. Helena, and there were at least, well, several SMART boards were down to start the school year. I hope, hopefully, they've been corrected. They also had teachers that were actually in place that were not, uh, I don't know if I want to use the word qualified. I'll say that they didn't have their teacher licenser and critical positions. We need to change that. We need to get to work again and back to again. You guys actually chose to do these jobs. The administration are in places and get paid great money. Let's get, let's get to work. Let's get this stuff done. It's time to go to work, folks. I'm here to help you. Thank you. Have a good evening.
That concludes our speakers for this evening.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tanner. Next item on the board, matters of the board.
We're doing the delegate.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, the delegate. Item seven point zero eight, the VSB A delegate. Is there a motion on the floor to accept Mr. Clanton as the VSB A delegate and Ms. Martin as the alternate?
I'd like to make a motion to the board that we accept Mr. Carlos Clanton as our delegate to the State Legislature and...
VSB A.
Whatever.
Oh, you've been really promoted. That was a real promotion right there.
VSB A General. Assembly, thank you, and Mr. Dell Martin as the alternative.
Thank you. Is there a second? Yes, we have been here since nine o'clock in the morning. Is there a second? I'll second it then. Okay. Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Basine.
Nay.
Campson.
Yes.
Clanton.
Yes.
Smith.
No.
Martin.
Aye.
Jordan.
I'm going to abstain as I may be a subject of matters before the VSB A Delegate Assembly.
Gabriel.
Aye. Love to have you represent us. Okay, thank you very much. Next item, matters of the board, seven point zero nine. One item that I would like to bring to your attention, we had a training in Charlottesville where we started a discussion that we had been trying to have for quite some time, and those are our board norms and our protocols. We were able to get a great amount of work done with the, with our partners, with the Virginia School Board Association. Unfortunately, due to illness, we had to end our training short. However, there was a great amount of work that was done. The VSB A has reached out to us, and they are able to provide a time in December to come down with us so that we can complete that work with the norms and protocols. So what I would like to do, since it has been expressed, so that, to talk about training dates and sessions together as one, I wanted to bring that forth to you all. We know that we just had a discussion earlier in the morning about our superintendent search and some dates around that time. What I would like to suggest is Ms. Tanner to do a poll of the board and send some dates to the Virginia School Board Association regarding a block of time, half a day, to get through the rest of the work that we need to with regards to our norms and protocol. Is everyone okay with that?
Yes, definitely.
All right. Are there any other items for matters of the board? Ms. Martin.
Just a reminder about the legislative days.
Yes, please do.
Okay, so November, I mentioned this last month, November is Bring Your Legislator to School Day, and so we've invited our federal, state, and local delegates to come and meet us at Richard Bowling Elementary on November 26th from 9:00 a.m. until noon, and so we're going to have a really fun conversation about all of our legislative priorities and stress, you know, the needs for them to be advocates of what we, of our needs here in Norfolk. And that will include a tour of the building, an activity, and brunch. But it is open to the public, so I encourage you all to attend if you are able. November 26th.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Jordan.
I had the opportunity, along with Ms. Basine and members of the administrative team, to attend the Council of Great City Schools Conference. I thought it was a very good conference. Part of what was received amongst several documents is a academic key performance indicator document, and there's a variety of subjects that's identified in here. What this Council of Great City Key Performance Indicator document does is it compares Norfolk's performance in a variety of areas with other school divisions in the Council of Great City Schools. These are the larger urban, as it's described, school divisions in the country. And one of the areas, there are many areas where Norfolk Public Schools is performing very well in the top quartiles or among the top performing in the country. There are also some areas where we have challenges, and one of the areas that we are still seeing challenges deals with discipline and blackmail and black female students in particular. And part of what we know has been discussed, both here in Norfolk and in the Commonwealth, but also what came out through several of the sessions at the council conference is this issue of bias and perception. And so I was, before I came to the meetings today, I was speaking to a class at Granby High School, and I was sharing with them what the school board does, and we were talking about dress codes and discipline and some other matters. And what those students also spoke to was this perception, you know, there's research that shows that oftentimes, uh, black girls are seen far more mature than they are. Black males and how they are viewed often end up dealing with issues around defiance, you know, in terms of perception. And I know over the summer, we did a little session on...
implicit bias.
Right, on implicit and explicit bias. I think we need to, at a future meeting, I know earlier you were asking about agenda items, get an opportunity to review some of this data, key performance indicators, and give some special attention to this issue of implicit and explicit bias, not just in discipline, but in hiring practices and all the things that we do. Because what tends to, I think, often get overlooked and sometimes underlooked is just how we see things through our own lenses and through our own eyes. So this data speaks to a lot of that. We got earlier feedback from stakeholder input from the superintendent search, and there are a lot of, or several mentions in here that I think also go to this perception among some, that different folks get treated different way depending upon what side of the city that you live on, what your ethnicity may be, what your gender may be, and I think it's something that we can give great attention to, and I think the reports from the council is a great starting point for us moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clanton.
So I'm not going to belabor, because I made a personal challenge, so we can get out of at 8:45. Anybody else receive that? But I would be remiss if I did not pause and thank Mr. Nate Kennison for coming forward and thanking all of those as a part of teachers, because not only you're a parent, but you're also an educator. And if no one else apologizes, I want to offer an apology to you for what you, your family, have gone through, that we have to recognize and realize that even in leadership and when we're out there, that we have to stand up, and we have to speak what's right, we have to remember what we're called to do, and we're reminded that as members of this board, a member of any school board, that we are to put student achievement first and foremost, and that we're not supposed to come here with adult agendas, and that we work hard, that we may not agree, but we're not supposed to be disagreeable, that we support and do everything that we supposedly, that we could possibly do to support. And all I can just say is something I remind, my grandmother used to tell me, that an old Negro spiritual, "Let the works that I've done speak for me." So, Mr. Kennison, I say to you, let the work that you've done, the people that you've taught, the students who have championed and who support you, let the work that you've done speak for you and not let anyone else do that for you. So we apologize and want to say thank you for coming tonight.
And I would also like to make a comment as well. I would like for you all to know that as your chair, I take my role here and on this board with extreme seriousness. I am a professional, and Mr. Clanton, I really do thank you for what you have just stated. We don't have a playbook as to how we go about our day-to-day routine, how we communicate, how we deal with situations that come up, but we have to be prepared to do so. And I would like for you all to know that the events that have transpired around the two articles in the newspaper were very hurtful. They were hurtful not only to the division, not only to myself, but also to a member of the citizen, Mr. Kennison, but also to the students. I believe that the intention of the administration was to find the best candidate to serve the students, and I need you all to know, the voters, the citizens, the public, that I had nothing to do with the process, absolutely nothing. I need you all to know that when the information was brought to us by the Director of Human Resources, Dr. Birdsong did not hesitate to reach out to Mr. Cloud, our attorney, and to seek the legal advice on a law that had just been changed. She wanted to follow proper protocol. She wanted to follow proper process, and immediately she telephoned Mr. Billups and communicated with him to communicate that to Mr. Kennison, and she communicated that to me as well. There were plans to do a proper certification so that way items that had already taken place would be appropriately managed. This was discussed in our closed-session school board meeting, not once, but twice. And then a special call meeting was brought up to our attention. But you all also need to know that immediately at that first closed meeting, the administration took full responsibility for an honest mistake. You all need to know that the issue was brought to our attention fully transparent by Dr. Birdsong and her administration, that they not only brought and accepted responsibility, but they also identified solutions so that this would never happen again. This is a very unique situation. It just is. And accidents happen, and guess what? We discussed it, and they took full responsibility for it. Where along the lines there is this insinuation that there was nepotism, cover-up, that I involved myself in the process, I simply just don't know. But I'm here to tell you from myself that that did not happen. I was fully prepared, as was Dr. Birdsong, to follow the letter of the law, and you also need to know that there is nothing that I do without the consultation of our legal attorney. Not only did I take an oath to be here as your school board member, but I took an oath before any one of these individuals sitting here, and that was my oath as a physician to do no harm. I have always put division over self. Many times I have apologized over and over again for things that I had technically no responsibility for, but because of the role that I am in, I take responsibility, and I know when it's appropriate to do that. But I am not taking responsibility for issues that were put out that are, that were put out in the name of transparency but frankly, false. And there were many opportunities afforded to individuals to seek clarity, and when you go outside of the superintendent and outside of the legal counsel and deliver information to an entity, it's serious. And I just needed to take this time to share with you all my side of the story, because I hate to put myself front and center. I'd rather be talking about closing achievement gaps, deferred maintenance, schools with accreditation, reading literacy. So I too am moving on. I want to build trust within our board. We certainly heard that when we received the feedback from the superintendent search, but trust starts with the us. And Ms. Campson always says, when there's an issue that comes up, she looks in the mirror. So I encourage all of us to look in the mirror and really ask ourselves, what are we here to do? I'm prepared, as I took an oath, to serve children, and I want our division to not only be highly successful, but I want us to be the envy of the 757. I want every student and employee to be so proud to be in Norfolk Public Schools and to have gratitude for the teachers and the administrators that lead this division, and one day you will be proud of it. one day you will be proud of your school board. I want that for our division. It's going to take some time, but we can do it. I think you all needed to hear that from me, and I appreciate you allowing me to do so. I adjourn this meeting.